Here.
Counselor Hassan?
Here.
Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan is excused. Mayor Beatty?
Here. Okay, that's just the end of it, got it. We are on, okay, so today we have a bit of a packed agenda, but my expectation is we are gonna breeze through this and be done by 7:30. So I'm just putting it out there, high-level expectations for this evening. We're gonna start with visitor comments, a proclamation, the city manager's report, and she told me she's gonna test drive letting some new, well, not new city employees, but people other than her address us tonight. So she felt like tonight would be the night where we would be minimal to hearing new things, so she's gonna do that. We have a lengthy consent agenda. We have a contract review board. We have a presentation from our bike advisory committee, and not one, not two, not three, but four public hearings. So let's get rolling tonight. We're gonna start with visitor comment, and as a reminder, that visitor comment is an essential part of local government business. However, in order to help us comply with Oregon's open meeting laws, this is not a time for dialogue, rather a time for us to listen. If follow-up is needed, the city manager, the city recorder, or I will arrange follow-up after the meeting. And we have one person joining us tonight, and that is Angelita. You have three minutes to address the council when you get up here and you're ready to go. Anyone?
Hi, counsel. My name is Angelica. I'm from the Southridge Conestoga area. I'm here to discuss wacky inflatable tube men, because I believe that they need to be banned in residential areas. My neighbor has one that he runs for maybe 11 hours a day. It has a loud air blower that makes constant noise. He turns it on. It's been getting worse, maybe five days a week, sometimes more. This has been going on for about four months now. I've tried making noise complaints to the city. I believe that he's violating the code of Title V, Chapter 15, Section 25, which states that no person shall make any noise which unreasonably disturbs the comfort, health, and peace of reasonable individuals of ordinary sensitivity. And that factors for determining whether a sound is unreasonably loud, include the duration of the sound and whether the sound is recurrent, intermittent, or constant. I can't open my window or sit in my own backyard without constantly hearing it. I can even hear the hum of the fan with my windows closed, and it's very distracting when I'm trying to focus. It disturbs my husband, who works from home. It's causing me to get angry and have anxiety, because it feels like this neighbor is purposefully trying to cause a psychological distress. And I'm guessing that this will go on all summer long. I tried talking to him. I broke down in tears in front of him, and he still refuses to stop. And it's not just me, like, we have kids on our street, so all the kids, all the animals, dogs, birds, everyone has to hear it running all the time. There's also an adult care home on our street, so those residents have to listen to it, too. Normally loud noises don't cause me psychological distress, because I know that they're temporary and that they'll stop at some point. But the fact that this thing goes on for 11 hours almost every day is enough to drive anybody nuts. If we can't get these inflatable tube men banned, then can we at least get a city representative to schedule a public hearing so that the council can determine whether a nuisance exists? In this case, I'm referring to Title V, Chapter 5, Section 145, regarding general nuisances. And I'm not too familiar with all this stuff. This is just me trying to do my own research, reading the codes online. I just wanna be able to enjoy the sunny weather and hear the birds chirping without being forced to listen to a blower all day long, and I want the same for all of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could drop an email address with the city manager, we'll do some follow-up with you. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the rest of our comments are for our public hearing. So I'm gonna read tonight's proclamation, and then we'll move on to the city manager's report. So tonight, we have a proclamation for Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Independence Day, commemorates the events of June 19, 1865, when Major General Gordon Grander led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that all enslaved people were declared free nearly two and a half years earlier by the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas one of the oldest American holidays, Juneteenth, commemorates formerly enslaved individuals and their descendants and has historically been a time of prayer, reflection, and a family reunion. And whereas July 4, 1776, represents the birth of the United States of America and commemorates its independence from British rule, it did not offer independence to enslaved people. And whereas although the Juneteenth celebration is specific to the emancipation of African descendants, its message promotes continued freedom, equity, and economic prosperity for individuals from all races, ethnicities, creed, and culture, and approves upon the nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas America may never forget or repeat its vivid and tragic events of African-American history, which exposed the dehumanization impact of racial violence, from chattel slavery to convicted leasing, from thousands of lynchings to racial massacre in Tulsa and Rosewood, from segregation to voter disenfranchisement, and from mass incarceration to state secession violence. And whereas we must remember the courage of those who fought for freedom, including those attacked on Bloody Sunday during the 1965 Selma to Montgomery marches across the Edmund Bridge. And whereas historically, Juneteenth observations have not always received acknowledgement and recognition, even though Juneteenth is a critical component of American history as it marks a turning point in the nation and a step towards equality. And whereas on June 1, 2021, the Oregon Senate unanimously passed Bill 2168 making Juneteenth an official holiday in Oregon. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the strength and resolve of Black and African-Americans through our history and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the numerous contributions of Black African-Americans. And whereas this year marks the 159th commemoration of Juneteenth. And whereas Beaverton honors the legacy of Juneteenth by working in partnership with our community to promote racial justice and create a more inclusive future for all. Now for I, Lacy Beatty, the mayor of the city of Beaverton, proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the city of Beaverton, and call this observation to the attendance of our members of our community, encouraging reflection, education, and the celebration of freedom and justice. With that, city manager.
All right, well, thank you, mayor, members of the council. First off, happy anniversary, 20th anniversary, to the mayor this evening. One reason why we will get through these updates pretty quickly tonight. So I have five announcements for you. The first is, if we could go to the next slide there. I wanna announce that our community events are back in Beaverton, and the first three here up on the slide are pretty critical, because they're up over the next three months. So we've got Pride, that's coming on Sunday, June 29. And you'll see our flags are already up in the downtown, which is a great celebratory sign. Ten Tiny Dances, everyone's favorite, July 19. National Night Out is coming August 5. Beaverton Night Market, Saturday, August 9. Celebration Parade, which is in September. And then we have Welcoming Week, which is also going to be celebrated, not only here throughout the county, but in the region, September 12 through the 21st. And then there's much more that I'd wanna point out, but some of the ones that we don't wanna leave out are the July 4 Concert, Legendary Makers Market, Beaverton Music Fest, and the Beaverton Half Marathon. So if you wanna find out what our impressive lineup looks like, check out beaverton.gov or oregon.gov backslash events. The next slide is actually something that's really special. It is our Children's Entrepreneurial Market, which takes place on Saturday, July 19, and then Tuesday, August 5. And this is right here at the Round Amphitheater. This is a very, very exciting program. It's an award-winning program, and what it does is it teaches young people about the power of being their own boss. So these kids get to learn how to develop and sell products. They get to create their own business plan, and they're also reminded not to eat their own inventory. So that's important as well. Wanna give a shout-out to the events program and the city's Office of Equity for finding new ways to expand our footprint and our impact in the community. The next one is our Summer Reading Program. It is for kids, teens, and adults. It's now through August 15. Anybody who tracks 15 hours can come choose a free book from July 4 to the August 15. And for every 1,500 hours that you read collectively, the Friends of the Beaverton will donate $100. So don't forget also, we've got a variety of youth-packed performances and entertainment, so think music, comedy, puppet shows, dogs doing tricks, and much more. Beavertonlibrary.org backslash events is where you need to go for the current lineup.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
Can the reading of our council packets count towards the donation?
Absolutely, mayor, will count.
Because collectively, that's like 1,500 hours a week, all right.
There you go, thank you. We've already halfway to our program award. The next slide is our New Public Art in Central Beaverton. So the weather is warming up. It's a great time to get outside. We want you to check out the new public art piece that was recently added to our Crescent Connection Trail. It's called Ripple. It's by Studio KCA. It's now been installed at the intersection of Southwest Hall Boulevard and Southwest Crescent Street. And the companion to this is Ribbon. It's located in the plaza that's right next to Patricia Resource Center for the Arts. And this area is known as the gateway to the larger Central Beaverton District. We have a cool, interactive map, so you wanna check that out. Go to beavertonoregon.gov backslash art. And then also, we want you to stay in the know, so check out our monthly newsletter. It's an electronic newsletter. You can sign up for it at beavertonoregon.gov to subscribe and find out the latest and greatest. And what you've all been waiting for is Casey Ferguson. He is our project engineer. He's gonna join you up at this table here and talk to you a little bit about the North Transmission Intertie Line and give you an update. Thank you, Casey.
Good evening. Honorable mayor and council members, I'm Casey Ferguson, here to give you an update on the North Transmission Line Intertie. As you know, a critical water source, water infrastructure project, creating a secondary and seismically resilient water supply source. And up on the map on the next slide, we have Segment 1, and it's broken up into three segments, 1A, B, and C. Segment A is baseline east-west from 158th to 173rd. It is complete with final pavement restoration and water lines in service as of last month. Segment 1B is 173rd, running north-south between baseline and Walker Road. It is underway with final pavement restoration, beginning next Monday, at baseline and 173rd, heading north. And we currently have water lines in service up to Lisa Street. And that's represented by the orange lines east-west and north there. And Segment C, that's southwest 170th between baseline and TV Highway, it's also underway with TV Highway and Union Pacific Railroad boring, complete, and the associated South Transmission Line connection to the NTL. That was completed on May 5. And there are typically two to four construction crews working in this entire vicinity, day and night, depending on the necessity. And I thought it'd be interesting to tell you, to date, we've had 17 calls or emails with questions and/or complaints since construction began on July 8, 2024. Next slide. The South Transmission Line is there, the ginormous white T that was installed, that was connected and in service on May 5. And I just gave you kind of an assorted pictures here, pretty typical of waterline construction up and down the two-mile corridor here. And then also, I just wanted to give you an update. I don't have a map, but North Transmission Line Segment 2, also known as Washington County's Walker Road Phase 3, work was scheduled to begin last month. Unfortunately, the county's latest schedule indicates they're gonna be going to bid in September and starting waterline construction in spring, summer, 2026. They've been delayed due to one final easement acquisition that they need. It's been ongoing. And Segment 3, which is outside city Beaverton limits, primarily Hillsborough, was broken into four segments, similar to Segment 1, with the addition of the fluoridation and chlorination treatment facility, which that property closed on June, I'm sorry, yeah, May 30, just recently. And the design, like I said, was broken up into four segments. And Segment 3.1, which is Walker Road between Northwest 185th and Northeast Alleclak, is 50% complete. We just had the design review today with the contractor and the engineer for the refining the design. And the final alignments for Segments 3.2 and 3.3 are currently under review and consideration with the city of Hillsborough. And anticipated construction completion is June 2028. That's all I had for you.
Awesome, thank you. This project, as you know, has been ongoing for some time, so to see this North Transmission Line come to fruition, it's, you know, probably a 20-plus-year city goal of getting off Portland's water source and making sure we have access to our water rights in other places. So thanks for coming to us tonight. I texted two of the previous city councilors that cared deeply about water and let them know that it's almost over the line. So please let us come look at the paved road where it is underneath when it's done and complete. So thanks for joining us tonight.
Yeah, I just wanna give a shout-out to the amazing legal, finance, and operations teams that we have here. And Emery &amp; Sons has been fantastic to work with on the construction, and RH2 is doing a fantastic job as well. So probably the best team I've ever worked with in my 20-plus career.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done?
I am.
Okay, I saw you text in "atta boys", just wanted to make sure you were done with us. Counselor President, consent agenda, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Just Hartmire Prigg, I'll second.
I do, we, I have some discussion on tonight's consent agenda. One, I wanna talk about the adoption of the street trees list, which is the number-one thing. As somebody that's walked every single street in Beaverton, I can tell you where street trees that should not have been planted have been planted a long time ago. I know that our tree team has done extensive work creating this list for residents, some based on complaints versus sidewalks. And sometimes you could see sidewalks are lifted in some neighborhoods, because 40 years ago, we didn't know what the outcome of what that's gonna be. Climate change has deeply impacted this region, and so making sure that we stay updated on the list of trees that is right for us, that doesn't use a lot of water, and does the least amount of damage to sidewalks is really important. So I was really excited to see that on the list. I also want to congratulate the chief and the city manager on the Beaverton Police Association contract ratification that's on tonight. This moved at lightning speed for government. It feels like just yesterday, and I think it was not too many yesterdays ago, that we authorized you, on behalf of the council, to close this association contract. And so while it is one agenda item on here, it represents a monumental amount of work that you guys moved so quickly. I'm excited to hear more details about it in the future, and thank you for doing that. And my hope is that we have a wonderful contract that represents the values of the city. And based on the fact it was ratified so quickly, I have no reason to believe otherwise. Right. Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to take a moment, recognize the TV Highway project, which has finally gotten the IGA. So Counselor Hartmire Prigg, I know you sat on that, and that's finally coming along. So thank you, thank you for the BPA work. That's been amazing. And the tree comment I had was, I didn't know we had so many trees. So if you want to learn about trees, I highly recommend you pull this agenda bill and see the list of types of trees. I felt like I learned a lot, so thank you.
And don't plant something that's not on this list. It will lead to badness. Counselor Teeter?
Thank you. I just wanted to call out the BPA contract agreement as well. One of the reasons why this moved forward so well is because I think there is a lot of trust between our officers and management and council that allowed the negotiations to move forward very smoothly. And I think this really was a model negotiation process, from everything that I've heard. And I'd love for us to continue building on that trust and just learn from it what we can to improve our partnerships elsewhere.
All right, so Trent, and I, Counselor Kimmy?
I'd just like to make a comment. Appreciate to see the list of Beaverton Tree List. And I also inquired to city manager, or Dan, about historic trees, where, how many do we have, and what is the process? I know we have a code where we protect the historic tree, but I haven't seen the list of historic trees or how we process it so that tree becomes historic or heritage. So it's in the inquiry, because I was asked by constituents about making certain big, round trees in downtown area to be historic or recognized, to save it. So it's coming, so hopefully I can get that soon, so I can get it out to the community members.
Good news, it already exists, and it's on the website. So I'm sure the city manager could forward it to you, but we do have a list of historic tree trees. We actually have an historic tree-walking path. And so I'd be happy to have you join the residents' asking with the book, so you could go through every numbered tree.
Thank you, next time.
And I'll join you, I'll come take some photos.
Next time, I'll call you first.
Yeah. No, and it used to be, out in the foyer, it used to be a walking map. So I don't know what happened to those, but it does exist. It is on the website, and there's a great path. How a tree gets on the list, that I don't know, so we will learn together. With that, the Bike Advisory Team.
Committee?
Oh, shit, I guess we should vote. I just saw all of our happiness. I took everyone's comments as yes, but by all means, make it legal.
Counselor Dugger? Counselor Hartmire Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty? Six zero, or six, yes, zero, no, one, absent, sorry.
Perfect. All right, now, the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Hello, Honorable Counselor, honorable mayor and esteemed counselors. It's very good to be here. I'm happy to present to you, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mick Orlosky, my pronouncer he/him, and I have the honor of being the vice-chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I served as the recorder in 2004, and this report is a brief overview of our activities in 2024. Next slide. I really wanna thank all my fellow volunteers on the BAC, as well as the staff liaison and the council liaison, Tivnan, who is not here, but our deep thanks to them. And I also wanted to call out our liaisons with the police department. Officer Kavi Bowen and Joan Amaco have been tremendous additions, and it really gives us a feeling of being integrated in the city government. We feel we have connections with the city administration, the staff, and all the different groups at the city, and it really feels like an effective use of our time. But... Just a reminder of our mandate to provide recommendations to the city about encouraging active transportation and making it a safe and viable alternate for people who choose to, and for all those who are unable to drive a car everywhere they want to go. We just wanna have this be a safe alternative and strengthen our community in this way. Next slide. More of the same, next slide. In 2024, we advised the planning department on some of the capital projects, like the Downtown Loop Project and the Melikan Way Project. We talked about being recognized as a bicycle-friendly community. That bullet point is the League of American Bicyclists, who recognize different communities around the country. And we are on that list as a silver city, so we are thankful for that, and we continue to monitor that and hope that we can build on that going forward. The project team saw wayfinding signs is something that the planning department is currently doing, so we're providing input as to where those go and what types of destinations would be useful to put on those. And we've tried to interact with the NACB liaison and find out what they need and hear, listen to them, and what their concerns are in terms of active transportation and things like that. Next slide. In 2024, we were proud to host the Oregon Policymakers Ride, which brought policymakers from many different governmental agencies in the state of Oregon, which was done in Beaverton. We had a community bike ride, joined by members of the public and a lot of different policymakers around the state, and talked about the issues that we face both here and statewide. And it was very constructive, and it brought the community very close together with the policymakers involved. We worked on the summer bike count to help provide data to our planning department. Some of us went to the Oregon Active Transportation Summit and learned a lot about the best practices and made a lot of connections with other active transportation planners and advocates and luminaries from around the state. That was a very, very good experience. We contribute to the Beaverton Resource Guide with articles, helpful articles, about the types of resources available to people who are interested in cycling and other active transportation in the city. We've made a partnership with the local bicycle club, Ride West Side, and we did things like a public bike tour of the, excuse me, a bicycle ride that went around to the public art that we've had in the city. We'll have to update it this year to include the new piece on the Crescent Path there. And one of our favorite things to do is to judge the art from the Safe Roots to School program. We get to see the students in the Beaverton School District and the art that they do for that contest. And it's really, it's a fun thing that we do. Next slide. And then sort of the crown jewel of the Bicycle Advisory Committee is Bike Beaverton. It's the unofficial kickoff-to-summer event, I think, here in the city of Beaverton. It's been growing every year that I've been a part of it, and it's really a great time to get out there and see the streets of our great city by bicycle and have a party at the end. And it's been another event that really ties together all the different prioritaries that we have as a city and in building community. And it's something we do every year, and it's something I'm very proud of. And next slide. So in the coming year, 2025 and beyond, hopefully, you know, we want to keep being advocates for the community and a voice for the community in city government, especially in the transportation planning. One example of that is the wayfinding signs, next slide. We definitely wanna continue building on the success of Bike Beaverton and make it really an event that everyone in the community can look forward to. We want to advise, we know that the transportation system plan is being updated, and a lot of the things in that plan involve a lot of community outreach and so-called tactical urbanism, these sort of small-scale projects that rely on community input. And we think that this is a great opportunity for us to advocate for the community and be a part of that process. And we wanna be a resource for the planners as well. We want to be something that adds value to the planning process. We kicked off our project this week, where we were creating a GIS map of bicycle parking locations in downtown Beaverton. This is something that eventually, we hope, can be an asset to all residents who want to come to downtown and be able to not have to drive there, not have to deal with parking, and not have to contribute to gridlock and things like that. So we think that's a big opportunity for us there. And we'll also be doing some data collection around upcoming projects on Allen Boulevard. We know this is going to be a big thing in the years ahead, so we hope to be an asset to the city there. Next slide. And we just wanted to point out that, you know, we've been definitely immersed in the city council's goal-setting and values identification process. We are very much aligned with that. We really believe in the priorities that you have set for city government. We think that this is, to create a vibrant community, an integrated community, and a diverse community involves many different transportation choices, whether that's walking, biking, driving, scooting, skating. A vibrant community is gonna have all these things, and we just wanna be a voice for the people who participate in that. Next slide. And I think that's it, is there one more slide? Thank you very much for this.
Awesome, thank you for joining us this evening. I'll agree on one point. I do think Bike Beaverton is the, we could just name it here, the kickoff to summer, because it's not Memorial Day, so I like the language of this one much better. And I will say that Counselor Teeter didn't get to participate this year, because his daughter's too big for the bike carrier, but he challenged me to a race next year, my bike carrier versus his. We are gonna put a 50-pound weight in his on top of his tiny daughter, but look for that next year, a little friendly parent competition at Bike Beaverton. And I would just say, I would love for us in the future to figure out a way to do more kids-focused bike stuff. One of the only organizations that exists at Duke Bike Camp is astronomically expensive. It's like $800 a week, and THPRD doesn't do it. it's like $800 a week, and THPRD doesn't do one either. So I definitely see some room to grow for us with young people in biking in the community. And yes, on all the things, we're going to get your opinion on the transportation plan and keep bringing it to us, and thank you for coordinating all the bike rides last year, and we look forward to what is coming next year.
Well, I definitely volunteered to be the commissar for that bike race if you need one.
Perfect, perfect. You'll be totally fair, though, right? Just kidding, I win all of them. Councilor Dugger.
Thanks, I'm going to quick, because I'm going to try and get out of here quickly, but I was liaison in 2023, it was one of the funnest, funnest things, we did bike rides, so if you ever get a chance, you should definitely advocate to be on that one. But I do thank the committee for the work on the complete streets, like we got that across the line, due to really great feedback, all the various different capital projects, but also I have a two-year-old niece that gets to daycare via cargo bike with her dad. And so as a cyclist who is unafraid to go anywhere, I didn't often consider, like, children and mothers and fathers with two-year-olds in cargo bikes, and now that is becoming integral to the way I look at bike lanes and network completion, so I look forward to the continuing work. I think wayfinding is a real opportunity. The other day I was driving and saw someone riding down Canyon, and I was like, you know, there's a better way, like, two blocks over, three blocks over, and I just, you know, I think some wayfinding signs, some people just don't know that there's safer options. I also, for the first time, rode my bike to Trader Joe's after being a cyclist who rides often 3,000 to 4,000 miles a year, did not realize, as many times I've gone, that there was even bike parking there, so I'm really excited to hear about that, because those are options for me when it's not. So congratulations on all the work, and thank you for the report, it's super important.
I was really on the edge on the Trader Joe's story, I was like, where is this going to end? Oh, it's going to end with bike parking, I thought it was going to end with something else. Councilor Teeter?
Thank you, Mick, and Dan, for being here. I really appreciate the work that you all do on this committee. One of the things I appreciate as well is the work that you do outside of the committee. So I see a lot of these bicycle advisory committee members outside of City Hall being great ambassadors for the work that the city is doing and helping describe why we are planning the projects we're planning or how it's working, and I think that translation service that you all offer is very valuable and very meaningful, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm pretty talkative today. Sorry. I appreciate that, I just wanted to ask you, do you have a prejudice against electric bike?
Not at all.
Just kidding.
Okay. But I see the different modes, I mean, anything that gets people out there, and like I said, we're not even prejudiced against cars, it's a complete process that, you know, we want to be, open up the streets to all users, however they need to get there.
I wanted to mention that recently about two or three parents came up to me and asked about safety in regards to electric scooters and skateboards on the streets, and now somewhere starting, and they see a lot of elementary school kids, youths, on the sidewalks and the streets going fast without helmets, and they're concerned about it. And I wanted to ask all of you and the staff where maybe we can find a way to educate the kids about speed, safety, and other concerns. I know bicycle advisory committee can maybe advise to that. My idea was use, you know, youth service officers or schools, so I might find a way to educate the kids. I know this is summer, but trying to get support for that one. That is my concern.
Okay, well, you're stumping in a presentation, but I'm going to go ahead and help you out here and have the city manager connect with the police chief to kind of bring that idea to light. I know Councilor Teeter and I have talked quite a bit about electric bikes on the trails, and during the winter, it's usually not a big deal, but as someone that runs frequently, the speed of electric bikes in the summer, particularly my daughter, who's just learning to ride a bike, can't get out of the way very quickly, so I do think there's a future conversation in mind, but it is the state law to wear a helmet during those, so maybe we could do some tickets with a diversion for community service for young people, because somebody that's suffered a traumatic brain injury, it is life-altering. Councilor Hassan?
I felt since everyone needed to speak, I should also say something, so thank you for the Bicycle Advisory Commission. I got to liaise a couple of years ago, and it was truly a joy. I do want to second what the mayor is saying, some more, just looking into more kid-friendly stuff as someone with younger kids. We did have an opportunity to bike from, I live in North Beaverton, so Five Oaks, to the food carts, which is so cool, except when your tire goes out on Milliken Way and there's nowhere to go. So just plugging it out there, like, where are stations and places and spaces? Because I did text Councilor Teeter, who didn't get back to me in time, so I had to take the max home, but just something to put on your radar is like, if we're going to move more towards that bike friendliness, it was hilarious listening to me bike with a bike, like, a flat tire on Milliken Way, so.
We've brainstormed different things to add to the GIS map project of what sort of resources can be added to that and become our community resource, and that was definitely something that we would consider.
I know Nike has some, like, on their campus, but I wasn't going to make it, so thank you.
Councilor Hassan's birthday is in December, so if her husband is listening, she needs a bike kit with an extra tube and a pump that she can connect to it. I'll help you out with that. All right, well, thank you for joining us today, and we appreciate your contribution to the community. All right, we are on to our public hearings. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on Resolution 4919 and 4920 water rates. Before we begin, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card found at the table near the door at the back of council chambers. Once a card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have two or three minutes to speak, as determined by the presiding officer. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comments, council members may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed resolutions.
Thank you. We'll go to the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Susan Cole, I'm the Assistant Director for the Finance Department, and I'm joined with, by Tim Elsie, our Public Works Director. And so we're here tonight to speak with you about a water rate approval and the water rate structure. Next slide. So before you this evening are two options in two separate resolutions. The first resolution or the first option is a cost-of-service consumption rates, where the single-family residential consumption rate is further divided into tiers. The second option, or the second resolution for you tonight, is a uniform consumption rate. Both options have the same fixed monthly meter charge that varies according to the size of meter, and both options raise the same amount of revenue for the water utility. We would ask that one of these options be selected for your approval this evening so that the city can continue to meet its water revenue bond debt promises. So the city's water program promotes resiliency, sustainability, redundancy. Redundancy is actually good for a water program, which I'm sure Tim can go into, so that when you turn on your faucets, that you for sure have drinking water that comes out of your faucet, so that's why we want redundancy. It sounds kind of funny to say we want something redundant, but we do want that for the water utility. We have a long-range financial forecast that we developed for the water utility when we first applied for the WIFI loan, which is a loan through the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. This set us on a path forward for financial sustainability for our water utility so that we could make investments into our utility to make sure that we provide water for generations to come within the city of Beaverton. This long-range financial model also allows for smoother, more predictable rates over time. Fiscal '26, which begins on July 1st, will be the sixth year in this 10-year financial planning horizon to fiscal year '30, and this is for generational projects where we are making investments for once in a generation. After this planning period, after fiscal year '30, rates are estimated to be inflationary after this period, after we get through these large projects. Turn it over to Tim. Next slide.
And as you can see from this slide, the city of Beaverton is a community that's benefited from foresighted planning and dedicated efforts to secure its water supply. Thanks to the vision and hard work of individuals, both past and present, like Casey Ferguson tonight, Beaverton has acquired three separate sources of drinking water, which provides for the resiliency and redundancy. We have water from the Joint Water Commission, which is our main water source. We have aquifer storage and recovery wells, and we're getting water from the Willamette Water Supply Program, which will hopefully be online a year from today. This redundancy is important, is vitally important with the climate changes we're experiencing and our proximity to the Cascadia subduction zones. It'll go a long way to ensuring that the city is well-prepared to handle potential disruptions. This service to our community, of course, comes with a cost, and it has taken a commitment and vision from this and previous councils in order to fund the security for current and future residents of Beaverton.
Excellent, next slide. So this graphic here on the screen shows you the quantity of capital investment we are making in our water utility. This graph is from fiscal 2018 until fiscal 2030, and it shows that just about $347 million will be invested in the city's infrastructure program. In order to fund that capital program, next slide, we do have to enter into debt. And so what this slide is showing you is the debt service that the water fund has incurred and is projected to incur until the year fiscal '30. You can see here the line on there, and if you look to the right of the graph, the right side shows the forecasted consumption rate, and the line shows how that rate will need to increase until that time so that we can still continue to afford the debt that, for these investments we're making into the water utility. And I really want to thank Casey, who explained the North Transmission Line, it's one of the largest, if not the largest, capital project the city has undertaken. And that water project, it's very timely, it's funded partially by the WIFI loan and partially by revenue debt, is how we're paying for that project. Next slide. So the water rate structure, some little bit of history, what we've done so far to date is the staff has engaged in extensive outreach to our community to explain the water rate structure and these options before you. We attended multiple boards and commission meetings to explain the tiered rates. We had individual outreach with Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District and the Beaverton School District. We've had articles in our city newsletter, we have had notices in our customer bills, and we actually have a custom webpage with a bill calculator, so that if customers want to know what the tiered rates might mean, they can plug in their consumption on that bill calculator to get an idea of what that means. And then once the council makes a decision tonight, we will continue the outreach to inform our customers on what the decision means for them. Next slide. So as I mentioned tonight, we have two different options, so this slide here just explains a little bit about the costs, the pros and cons of the first option, which would be the cost-of-service rates with a single-family residential consumption rate divided into tiers. And so this does address the council direction we received over a year ago to explore the possibility of tiered rates. It aligns the customer types with the cost of recovery for serving water to those customer types. It does offer a lower bill for those residential customers who are low-water users, and it sends a strong price signal to conserve water. Some of the trade-offs of this option include that residential customers with high water use will pay more, even if that increased usage is due to a large household versus due to irrigation. Other customer types, such as public facilities and irrigation-only customers, will pay more than they would under the second option. And lastly, this rate structure is a little more complicated in that the residential sector would have tiers, and so as their usage increased, the price point for those units of water would likewise increase, so it is a little more complicated. Next slide. The second option before you tonight is a uniform rate structure, which is the same structure as we currently have today. One of the pros is it is very straightforward, it's easy to figure out, as I mentioned, it's the same as we have today. All customers would pay the same consumption rate regardless of the customer type or regardless of their usage. Large households would pay the same unit rate for water. Public facilities and irrigation-only customers would pay less than they would under the tiered rate model. Some of the trade-offs is that it does not align rates to the costs to serve those customer types. Instead, all the costs are dumped into one bucket, and then the rates are figured out accordingly, equalized across the system. Low-water users would pay more than under the first option, and another trade-off is that the price signal to conserve water is more muted in this particular option. Next slide. So here we see the actual rates themselves in the two scenarios, with option one again being cost-of-service with tiered rates. Option two is just a flat rate for everybody, and then the box there on the right just shows you that both options include a fixed meter charge per month, which is the same for both options, that part does not change. Next slide. This shows you some estimated bill impacts for residential customers only. The first in the, I have a little tiny blue highlight there for four CCFs. CCF stands for cubic, 100 cubic feet of water, that's how we measure our water use, is per 100 cubic feet, which is equal to 748 gallons of water. If you were at a boards and commission meeting, you may remember the two hot tubs. One unit of water is equal to approximately two hot tubs that can hold three to five people each, if you're curious. So here we see the rate impact for a small household, maybe two people, using four units of water. You can see there the tiered consumption rates, they would pay about $49.01 for one month's use versus the uniform rate, they would pay $52.53. So there you can see the variance between the two different options for a low-water user. The second option is a household that's a little bit larger, seven-person household, using 12 units of water each month. Under the tiered option, they would pay $117 per month versus the uniform rate, they'd only pay $107 per month. So you can see there in this slide how the two options vary across the different water users and the impact that it may have. The graphic there on the right is a customer, is an example of a customer bill. On the far right, sort of in the middle, there's a little red circle, a little tiny number there on your bill, so if you get a bill in the mail, this is what it would look like, and there's a little tiny number there that is the consumption that a person would use each month. Our e-bills are the same format, they have more detail, but it's the same basic orientation of where you can find your consumption on your water bill. So customers can estimate their own bills, if they like, by using the calculator on the city webpage, and there you can see the web address for the city's webpage for the proposed utility rates. Next slide. I also wanted to provide just a little information on the customer assistance that the city offers. The city has a partnership with the Community Action Organization of Washington County since 2020. As luck would have it, we entered into this partnership one month before COVID hit. We did not utilize that partnership very much in the beginning of COVID because we had other financial assistance that was brought to bear to help our customers, some of which I've listed, or all of which I've listed here. So we've also used ARPA funds to help customers, $460,000 that came during the pandemic through Washington County. We had $123,000 in low-income household water assistance through the state, and $40,000 in CARES Act through, funding through Washington County. And you'll see a bullet there that since 2020, the city alone, with our own utility funds, has provided $312,000 to help our customers who have that need. So the total assistance since 2020, since the start of the pandemic in February, or the pandemic started in March, our community action partnership started in February of 2020, we have helped customers to the tune of $935,000 in that time period. So we feel we have a fairly stable customer assistance program, customers can get referrals or they can talk to our staff directly, and then we set them up with Community Action, who offers wraparound customer assistance. So with that, next slide. We would ask that the city council adopt either option. Option one with the tiers is Resolution 4919. Option two is the uniform rates, or Resolution 4920. And so we would ask that one of these options be selected so that we can meet our debt promises. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions of the staff? Okay, I'm going to open up tonight's public hearing. We have visitors online and in person, so we're going to start with our in-person people. Gary Keck, David Savage, you're on deck, and then after that will be Deborah. And you could just come on up, and you'll have two minutes to address the council, and as a reminder, if you choose to testify, the council can ask you questions. That was meant to be an inviting comment, but please.
Well, good evening, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Gary Keck, and I'm the Planning and Development Manager for Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District. So I'm here tonight to testify for THPRD, and we have provided written testimony as well, which should be in front of you. As you all know, the THPRD- As you all know, the THPRD provides parks and recreation for the city of Beaverton, as well as a larger portion of eastern Washington County. And these spaces are open to the public, and they are valued and shared community assets. And we understand there are two options being considered tonight, and both will increase THPRD's annual water costs. We acknowledge the need to raise the rates and to cover costs. We know how hard it is to develop balanced budgets these days. Our preference is for city council to select the uniform consumption rate. With that said, if council chooses to implement the cost-of-service model, THPRD does request that all irrigation accounts owned by public agencies be classified as a public facility. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. David Savage? And then Debra Gibson, you're on deck.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Dave Savage. I'm a City of Beaverton resident, also a business owner here. Fun to listen to everything that's happening tonight. I've encountered a lot of these things. I belong to a home association that has 52 houses, and we have meetings like this, only not as important. And we are also digging out trees that shouldn't have been planted in 1972. Our property was built in 1972, and so it was a unique setting. It's on 11 and 1/2 acres. We have 52 houses. Our problem with the tiered system is it would really unduly hurt us, and we really can't do anything about it. Two of our three valves, which are two-inch valves, are irrigation valves, but they're used to mainly water the plantings of our park-like setting inside of our property, again, which was built in 1972. The equivalent is if you considered each of the 52 houses, their use is not really abnormal for watering all of the plants. You know, it would be like three of the units, but because all of everyone's water comes through our valves, that's 52 houses times three. We're now in the 156th unit at $1199. That, as well as the other two of our valves are pure irrigation, they'd go up to the $8.00 each. And so the financial impact would be significant. I feel that the option two does encourage conservation. Obviously, we use a considerable amount of water because we do water our plants, but it also keeps our property the way it is, and also the property value is high. So we don't consider ourselves a wasteful entity. We do a lot to conserve. We do, we update our systems. We try to get it efficient. And so I just feel that the second option just seems to be a little more equitable than option one. Thank you.
Yes, and David, I would say that an HOA meeting is 10 times harder than a city council meeting, so bless you for doing it.
Well, everyone shows up when money's involved, so I'm saying.
Yes. Well, some of the councillors have questions, if you're, if you appreciate it.
Yeah, just, I want to clarify, because this is a first I've heard of an HOA. So are you saying that all 52 houses are on, are on one water account?
So no, they each have their own water account for, you know, the household. But all of the water that supplies the, it's irrigation, so all of the greenery, the shrubs, the rhododendrons, the flowers, the pathways. We're also in amongst some extremely large dug firs. We're on the corner of Hart and Murray, and so if you, most people don't know we're in there, but when they come in there, they're like, why didn't you know this existed? Talked to the architect of the, or someone did, I don't know if he's still alive. He said, yeah, they'd never let us build anything like this nowadays. There's just, you know, way too much space, which is just trees and plants and things like that. We do have some grass, but it's like, is, how much of that is actually just grass? And we consider it like probably less than, or about 30% of what we water, and it's not just directly grass. Most of it's for greenery and plantings.
Okay, just so I'm clear, you're saying the HOA is billed for the irrigation separately than the individual households?
Yeah, correct. So the three valves, two of them are for irrigation, so they would be primarily sprinklers. The third one, which we can't turn off, we turn those two off in the off-season because we're not using water at all. The third one has a clubhouse associated with it, which has showers and toilets, so it's on the sewer system as well, so that one can't be turned off. That's another one that's kind of bad because it's not only the clubhouse, but also some irrigation, so that we would get like doubly dinged on. It would be, we would easily be up in that higher tier right away, and we really have no way of changing that.
And have you put the HOA's numbers into the calculator to help us understand how much that would hit you?
I have.
And can you, would you be willing to share that?
Sure. So I took like some of our worst seasons, like the hottest possible scenario. And at our current rate, basically per household, you're looking at about $28.00 per month. Obviously, there's a section of the year we're not using water, so that's low, so I just average it out over the year. Most of that would be during the watering summer months. In the option two, that would go up to about $33.00, $34.00 a month per house for, is the same scenario, which is the worst case. In the tiered system, and I did, I missed the, it was really hard to calculate the, once you go above 11 units, I was really, I didn't actually include that. So I actually considered it at the $88.00, as opposed to $1199. So it's probably more than this, but about, they go about $43.00, $44.00 a house. When you look at the numbers for the association, they're big numbers. When I'm sitting on that side of the table, I'm showing bills, I'm like, hey, remember, there's 52 of us, so don't look at these numbers. But, you know, currently, we're about $17,700 a year for water usage in the association. With the tiered one, it would go up to about $26,500 estimated. For the option two, we'd go up to about $20,600. So, you know, a significant increase to go 17,700 to 20,600, but a really hurtful one to go from 17,700 to 2700.
Thank you.
For a small community.
Awesome. Any other questions, councillor Hudson?
Yeah, I think you answered it. Thank you, David, for your testimony. You said you guys are located on Murray and Hart. Are you a member of the HOA, and that's where you're?
Yeah, I live there. So I'm also on the board of the, of the Homeowners Association, yes.
Okay. This isn't a question for you. I'm just processing out loud, like, what the other impacts for other homes and with HOAs are. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's similar, because my mom was on the, the one on Allen and Fifth, and like they're watering, and theirs is on a shared irrigation system as well that goes up in the summer because of the usage, because they water everything.
Yeah, I commend the Water Commission. Their communication has been wonderfully clear. It's been everywhere. But I highly, I think some people just haven't taken notice, regardless of that. I'm going to say other associations would be in the same situation as us.
Thank you. All right, that's it. Thank you. Debra Gibson?
I'm a new resident, very new. I just moved to Beaverton three months ago. And I'm a homeowner. I live by myself. So when I got my first water bill, I was pretty astounded. And I was, I really questioned why, you know, my actual water use bill was $11.80. My sewer use bill was almost $20. So with that, it's $31.80. But then there's the fixed fees, or I'm assuming they're fixed fees. With all the actual fixed fees, it comes to like almost $90. So even though I'm trying to conserve my usage of water, because what I'm, what I've been doing is reusing my gray water, my shower water, and I have a bucket, and I let it collect, and then I use it to rinse my dishes or even water some of my plants in my backyard. But I thought, you know, it's nice to conserve, and I want to do my part to be water-wise. But I see that no matter what I do, you have these fixed fees that it's always going to be at least $90, and then on top of that is the water use. So it seems extremely unfair. But I was really happy when I got my recent water bill and the notice that had this, you know, talked about this hearing. So I said, well, wouldn't this be lovely, you know? So I would tend toward the tiered, you know, rates, but it looks like I really didn't do much research before coming here. And mainly, I came here just to see what is being proposed. But I, if it, it looks, it's, it looks like that even with option number two, the uniform billing, that it would still be, it would be like close to half of what I'm paying now. I mean, they, you were saying for a residential use, the average might be 50 bucks. That's definitely less than what I'm paying now. My newest bill was $104. So, yeah, whatever you can do to help us out, that would be great.
Any questions of Ms. Gibson? All right, you're off the hook. Thank you. Scott Jackson, you are up next, and Sandy Smith, you're on deck.
Well, thank you for your time, Mayor of the City of Beaverton. See, the first question I'd like to ask today is, you're giving examples of two tiers, but what is the city looking as far as an increase on overall? You have to know what the increase you're looking at on an annual basis.
This, this is a public hearing, so it's our time to hear from you, but we can follow up via...
But you can't answer that, if you can't answer that question, then you're giving the wrong examples here tonight. Second example, and I mentioned it in my notes there, I think it was five or six years ago when the billion-dollar pipe was going to be established, and there were separate meetings around to get the water, and the City of Beaverton acquired came into view. What was disappointing at that time, the people managing it, the public entity, they didn't understand that, what compounding does. And at that, at that moment, your, your rates went up 78% automatically. They were going to just go up by that much. You take an 8% increase on any bill, doesn't have to be a water bill, and that doubles every nine years. So being here tonight, I'm listening to, what, tier one or tier two rates, whatever they are, but you're not giving us what that actual increase is over a period of time. Third thing is, I'd like to know what the revenue the city takes in from the water. We know how much Portland gets, and Portland's is some of the most expensive, but I don't want to dovetail that you can get away with these rate increases because Portland is so Any response, or can you answer any of that, or?
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is a public hearing, so we're here to take feedback from you. We're happy to follow up on any questions.
Well, here's what I'm afraid of.
But I, I will tell you this. We, we put out this information when we talk about the water rates. This hearing tonight is about the tiered water system. So what you're asking for is not really what we're addressing this evening, but I'd be happy to have staff follow up with you.
But, but I'm going to interrupt you, because what you say is if this passes tonight, then it goes into effect on July 1. So either we know why we're even talking about this rates, because what I'm saying is it's already going to go into effect. And I don't think that's right for the public residents, because we could pull thousands of them in here if they understood what's happening. And the other thing that you say I can't ask is what's the revenue of the City of Beaverton? Because it was just witnessed here a few moments, or discussed a few moments ago, that you give X amount, hundreds of thousands of dollars away to other people that, that may need the subsidy. My suggestion to you, and I have a lot of empathy towards it, is all the residents made those donations for that to happen. The City of Beaverton isn't giving anything away.
Is there any questions for Mr. Jackson?
Well, there, so how do we resolve this? How do you, how do you make a decision? And I'll get, I'll leave. How do you make a decision whether you're going to increase the rates or you're not? That's the question. You can't answer that tonight?
This is not a water rate hearing, sir. We, we have a water rate hearing that has already happened. This is about how we get to the, to the number that we already passed. So we're trying to decide if we do it in a tiered system or a uniform system. So tonight, the decision is not about how much we're going to charge for water. That decision has already been made at a past meeting. And I'd be happy to have the city manager follow up with you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello. First time at one of these things. So I'm all about conserving water. I can pretty much duplicate what Debra said when she was up here. We use our gray water, water my plants with all that. We're really conservative. I plant drought-tolerant plants. I've pulled up the front yard, so there's really no vegetation other than food that I can grow. So any, any way that I can conserve a bit more rather than, you know, make my lawn nice and lush and green, I embrace the brown. I like a brown lawn. But I, I think that this tiered system will promote some conserving, conserving of water. It's really precious. When I see somebody watering their lawn or washing their car and the hose is just running, it just drives me a little bit nuts. So I'm here to say, I think this is a great idea.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening. Any questions for Ms. Smith?
No? All right. See you then. Thank you. Thanks.
Are there online people? No? Okay. All right. Okay, I will close the public hearing. I know this is a bit unusual, and I want to ask the city attorney for some guidance. We have two motions we need to make, but we don't really know where we are. So is it, how do I kind of handle that?
The way that I would recommend that you handle that is whoever makes the motion gets to pick the one that is their preference. And then if it gets a second, you move forward and you debate that motion. If it does not receive a second, then you'll know that another motion will need to be
Hold on, I'm sorry. I see councillor Hartmeier Prigg in the chat here.
Oh, that's okay. I was going to make a motion, so councillor, give me if you want to make one, that's fine.
Okay. I move that council adopt Resolution 4920, a resolution establishing the water consumption rate and monthly meter charges, and repealing Resolution Number 4854, implementing a uniform consumption rate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And just, so we're all on the same page. The motion that's on the floor is about a uniformed rate versus the tiered rate. So I'm going to open discussion on that. Councillor Hartmeier Prigg, did you want to talk on that, or were you just in there for a motion?
Yeah, I can talk on that. So I am in favor of the uniformed rate. I will say that I was someone who, over the last couple of years, has asked for us to have information about tiered rates. It was really important to me that we have all the information. And I will say that after having all of the information, I think that the impact of the tiered rate unfortunately didn't accomplish what I was hoping that it would accomplish in terms of both the cost savings and the potential behavioral shift that I was hoping for. And so I want to acknowledge just all of the work that staff has done. And I know that when we held this hearing a couple of months back and we were unsure of what to do, it was because our, our community came out and spoke with us, just like you did tonight. So I want to thank everyone that has engaged. I want to thank staff for all of the outreach that you have done to our community to help make sure that people were really informed of this potential change that we were considering. But as I've, you know, considered the information over the course of the last few months, the staff presentations and the research given to us, I have come to the conclusion that I want to continue with the fixed rate going forward.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in real quick. You know, I grew up in Southern California, so water consumption, I think, has been like bred into me. Do, you know, we weren't allowed to water the grass, you only took a shower every other day. And so I was really hopeful in the tiered rate system, we could really drive a reduction of water usage. What I find extra complicated, and I've been asking staff in all my one-on-ones, is given the diversity of the city as far as like multifamily and renters, we have, we have a higher percentage of multifamily units than other cities, and the tiered rates doesn't really address that. And when we're talking about consumption, those are some of our largest water consumers. And I do think we had two things we were trying to accomplish. Water reduction from an environmental standpoint and a, and a chance to kind of own your destiny to lower the bill. What I think is challenging about the own-your-own destiny is, as it was pointed out by one of our residents, the majority of the bill is actually about sewer. And so we're not able to meaningfully drive the bill down in a way that I think we were hoping out of this. And I want to say, like, it's okay when we ask questions and we go down a path and we get a consultant and we have presentations that our original assumption is not the one we're going to go with. And so tonight, I'm planning on voting for the uniformed rate, because the other piece that I'm deeply concerned about is wildfire season and the encouraging commercial and irrigation... and the encouraging commercial and irrigation people to not water, I think, is going to lead to a disastrous outcome. We do need to have a conversation about how we're, um, moving away from large sections of grass, but we're not there yet. And so, I want to get more to, like, around our police station, that's more natural vegetation that requires less watering. But I think we, we have a situation here where we kind of, um, we have the ball ahead of it, and the majority of people aren't not going to be impacted by a reduction. So, tonight, I'll be voting on that. Counselor Duggar?
Yeah. Really conflicted here, but I will be voting no on this. And the reason being is, although I do not love the tiered rate, the way it's set up, I think the idea is correct, and I think we've got to move in that direction. Here's a couple of things I want you to consider. All of our projections are assuming no one makes any investments or curbs their usage at all. And I don't know of a better way to get people to do that than to raise the prices for that higher consumption. That is an incentivizing structure. It has happened across this country, almost every water district. Many of them do this. Also, for our large partners like THPRD, you may have seen the question that Jenny sent us. Bureau under-assessed this year to the tune of, I think, $100,000, more than $100,000, going back to THPRD. I also asked the question of, you know, we're not the only water district that serves them. Okay? TV, uh, TVWD, uh, excuse me, I get acronyms. Actually, even at the tiered higher rate, would still have higher water rates than we do. So, we are still having a lower water rate, even with the tiered, uh, on a, on a CCF basis. And so, um, I think we've got to consider that, that we need, this is something worth protecting. Is this a perfect system? No. I, I hear from the gentleman with the HOA, that's a complication for me. Right? Like, our intent was never to, to harm users like that, but at some point, with this investment that we have to make in resiliency, I think it is something worth considering. Is this a 1.0 to me? Yes. We probably will need to tweak this over the years, and I, and I'm okay. I can live with this if this passes. I'm not going to, you know, this is not a, a hard line for me. But, but I do think we've got to figure out a way to incentivize people to make investments in their home. I've done it in my own. It's not very expensive to put those aerators on your water, to, 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 you know, to cut back on your irrigation plant, locals, local Oregon plants, to, you know, over time, we can all do that. And, uh, I just, I, I think this is, uh, the right move, but I, I can live with either one, but I will be voting no on this.
Counselor Teeter?
I've got a lot of similar thoughts as Counselor Duggar just shared. We're looking at the cost increases for different household sizes, and they look very high, pretty much no matter which way we go. And the reason for that is because our, our infrastructure investments have been so great and so meaningful over the past several years, and will continue to be so. That said, looking at the tiered rates, one of the reasons why I also will vote no, or I'll probably vote no on this, on this motion. The tiered rates for a two-person household averages out per person to be about $24.50. Under a uniform rate, it'd be about $26.50. Uh, for a seven-person household, under the tiered rate, it'd be about $17. Under uniform rates, it's about $15.50. So, uh, the cost burden on a smaller household is less under the tiered approach. And per person, um, per person, larger households, there's a lot of concern if larger households would be paying much more. Per person, they are still paying a lower cost. Again, that's per person, so if you divide out the total bill by each person living there. So, I'm not as concerned about large household impacts, because I think it's distributed among the number of people living there. And Counselor Duggar mentioned most of what else I was going to say there, too, so, thank you. That's it.
It's distributed among everyone living there, but it's only two people paying the bill. Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, this is a hard one. I've been pretty conflicted. I think, folks, if you watched the first hearing, I supported the tiered model. I felt like this is the direction that we were giving staff, and I felt really supportive of it. I was pausing over the THPRD testimony, just in terms of making sure we're bringing our partners along. I do believe in the concept of tiered. Like, I think that that is something that's really important when we think about sustainability and like the world that we want to build for our future, is teaching that sort of conserve, like, to teaching, to teach conserve, conserving water. So, I'm, I'm very supportive of the tier-based model. However, I also think that when I'm looking at some of the numbers, and I'm thinking of how we're hitting people in their homes today, in this moment, in this economy, I feel like I, I want to pause. And so, I'm going to support the uniform, is it the uniform, uh, uniform consumption rate? Sorry, just going to pull that, get that. Yep. Supporting the uniform consumption rate tonight, but because, um, I'm trying to be thoughtful of how we're hitting homes' bills right now. Um, and I was, uh, thankful for the testimony that we heard that really supported that. But I would like, to Counselor Duggar's point, us to move towards something like this at some point. I think, I do think that that's important, and it is important to me. And I think, in terms of, again, like, long-term goals and, and the direction that we want to go in sustainability, it's, it's really critical. So, tonight, I'm, I'm supporting the current motion, um, with enthusiasm, but also sort of hesitation, because I was really excited for the tiered model. I want to thank staff. I know how hard they worked. Um, I was really supportive of the tier-based model before, and I hope that we can look at, at how to bring it forward sometime in the future. And I hope as, as that comes, because we did work with consultants, that we're able to build a model that potentially brings our public utilities along in a way that, that we could pass it, you know, the first time. So, I, I want to just make sure I said that on the record, so, thanks.
Counselor Kimmy?
When I first heard about tiered rate, I, I loved the idea, incentivizing people to conserve water. That's, you know, my values also. But once I received the studies and consultant reports, um, one thing I learned was that single-household dwelling owners and residents have option to conserve water. They can do whatever they can. But most of the high-usage people are businesses or institutions, school districts, the THPRD. Large consumption, uh, consumers are, have no choice but to use water. So, um, and their rates will be going up significantly higher. That's why, that was the hesitation, and that's why I'll be voting yes on the motion for implementing uniform consumption rate, but I'll, I'm going to post something at the end of the business today to maybe find a way to incentivize people to conserve water. So, that's coming.
We're, we're done with the water conversation?
Okay.
But we'll, we'll think about adding something later. I really thought we were, we were trending towards a tie there. So, uh, I'll, um, have the recorder call the roll. Sorry, Resolution 4920. Counselor Duggar?
No.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
No.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries force two. Okay. That wasn't an easy one for us. Okay, we're on to our next public hearing. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Resolution 4921, a resolution establishing, uh, the sanitary sewer and stormwater charges, and repealing Resolution 4878. Before I begin, I will ask our city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card found on the table near the doors at the back of the council chambers. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have two or three minutes to speak, as determined by the presiding officer. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comments, council members may be asked questions, may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed resolution.
Awesome. You're back? Let's do it.
Yes. Susan Cole, Assistant Director, Finance Department. I'm joined tonight by, with Debbie Lochner, Finance Director. We're here this evening to talk about the sanitary sewer and storm rate increase. Next slide. These services of stormwater and sewer services are provided in partnership with our regional partner, Clean Water Services. CWS is the regional provider of these utility services. CWS builds and maintains the wastewater treatment facility, um, where all the sewer goes and is treated. And then, they also hold the permits issued by the Department of Environmental Quality by the state of Oregon to ensure that the Twelton River and all its tributaries remain healthy. The city provides local services, um, in these regards to city residents and city businesses. It's through an intergovernmental agreement that the city bills on behalf of both Clean Water and itself for, for regional and local services. The city adopts the same percent increase as Clean Water Services, as we've done, actually, since the 1970s. Uh, we do have, uh, in our budget for fiscal '26, a consultant study to study rates for storm and sewer, much like we did for water. But there will not be tiered rates for sewer. That would be impossible to implement. So, um, again, we adopt the same increase as Clean Water. Next slide. We are recommending to me, tonight, a 3% increase. Clean Water Services did notify the city that they were actually dropping their rate proposal from a 4% increase to a 3% increase, and so, we are following suit with them. The financial impacts of dropping from a 4% to a 3% means a slight decrease in revenue for these two utilities, which does impact the contingency for future capital projects for these two utilities. However, their ending fund balances still remain over target. So, financially, these utilities, um, will still be sustainable by dropping that percent rate increase. Next slide, please. The bill impact, um, you can see here on this slide for our customers. So, under the 4% increase, uh, the, a city resident may pay roughly $1.70 more per month, and then, now, they'll save about 62 cents with this 3% increase. On the stormwater side, a 4% increase, they would have paid 40 cents more per month, and then, dropping it, drops it to, uh, they save 14 cents per month. So, they're very small for the stormwater, so not, not a big impact. And again, we're, I don't know if anyone has followed the Clean Water Services public hearings, so we are just following and lockstep with them as we've done, um, in our history. And that's my, my presentation.
I don't think that's what people have been following at...
No, I'm sure you're right. But they, they were asked to drop their rate proposal from 4% to 3%.
I'm sure they were. There's a lot of angry ratepayers. Any questions of staff? And just, uh, for the record here, we are not CWS, so if you have any concerns about their news, please direct it to their board, but I welcome the 1% reduction. Uh, if there's no questions with staff, um, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't put my name. So, just so I understand, Clean Water Services passed this rate? They've already passed it, and they are, uh, we owe them that money? Essentially, we're capturing it on our bills. Is that correct?
Right. Their public hearing was this morning.
Correct.
Right. Yes. And so, through an intergovernmental agreement, we bill for them. So, that's where the partnership is. So, we collect it all. We charge their rates on our bill, and then, we remit to them, um, their share.
Yeah. Now, for purpence, I knew that. I just wanted to get that out there.
Oh, sure.
Like, this is not a City of Beaverton. This is a Clean Water Services. Thank you.
Yes.
Way to say exactly what I just said, with different words. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone want to join this banter about CWS? No? Okay. The city recorder said, "Don't open that channel." Uh, all right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I move that the council adopt Resolution 4921, a resolution establishing the sanitary sewer and stormwater charges, and repealing Resolution 4878.
Second.
It's been moved and sec, uh, moved by Counselor Hassan and seconded by Counselor Duggar. Any more discussion on tonight? Counselor Kimmy, you haven't talked in this public hearing. Are you sure you don't want in? Okay, I'm just kidding. Uh, with that, will the recorder please call the roll? Mayor Beatty? Yes. Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
601. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding Resolution 4922, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, and making budget appropriations. Before we begin, I will ask the city, city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card found on the table near the doors at the back of the council chambers. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the dais and wait to be called. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have two or three minutes to speak, as determined by the presiding officer. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comments, council members may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed resolutions.
Please. Presentation.
I'll keep this very quick. Um, so, tonight, we have the final supplemental, um, budget amendment for the year. This is primarily a technical, um, adjustment that, um, the Finance Department goes through all of the different funds and ensures that we will not have any budget violations, and then presents a final supplemental request to the council to ensure that we maintain our budget integrity for the final, you know, throughout the year, so we don't have any overages in spending. So, this is essentially that. There are a couple of grants where we're recognizing the revenue and the expenditure, so it's, it's neutral, but this is what is in front of you tonight.
And we're required to do this because local governments must pass a balanced budget.
And they must have a balanced budget at the end of the year as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Uh, Counselor Hassan?
In your experience with the city, do you often see supplemental underages or overages, or a mix?
We typically only look for the places where we may have overspent. Um, so, there are underspending in other areas within the budget, yes. Um, but we're typically just looking at the expenditure side to ensure that we don't overspend.
Okay. Do we have a policy if departments underspent that instead of encouraging them to spend to the max, to put that somewhere? Have, has that ever been discussed?
You can phone a friend, city manager.
So, when departments underspend, that underspend is captured and goes into fund balance. Um, and there could be different ways if council wants to allocate that fund balance differently. We have a reserve target, which we meet every year. We have a capital, um, fund, which we can put money in as well. But typically, we'll go into your fund balance, which is just a fancy word for reserves.
Okay.
And I would just add, I don't, we don't encourage the departments to, you have to spend it by the end of the year, because we do have a process to roll funds over next year if they need them. So, we really just want the departments just to operate as normal and not hurry up and spend at the end of the year.
Okay. I, I brought it up because I've done, I remember doing budgeting a lot in college, and is there a way to incent, not incentivize underspending, but like to take that underspending and say, is there something we could do with it? So, we don't have to address that today, but just something to put on your radar.
Our, our departments, to fault sometimes, underspend. Um, they're very thrifty.
Well, and I, and I don't want to, typically in budgeting, when you underspend, you like, it's a slap on the wrist, and we under, like, give you the next time. That's good to know. Uh, but I think if, if that is going to happen and there is going to be some funding, I'd love to make sure that we're able to talk about the conversation, given all of the things that are happening. So, I'm just kind of bringing that up for us to be thinking about for the future, so, thank you.
Um, okay. I was just waiting for the city recorder. Any other comments? All right. Uh, is there a motion? We already did it, and I closed it.
I, I, I move that council adopt Resolution 49...
Oh, wait, no, you're right. I'm sorry, we did not open the public hearing. I was like, all blending together. Public hearing, anyone in? Did you fill out a card? Are you, are you wanting to speak? Uh, okay. Well, you had to fill out a card. Yep. Can someone help him? Run. I will take a motion. Close the hearing. Now I'll take a motion. I've done this before.
Right. I move that the council adopt Resolution 4922A, resolution adapting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, and making budget appropriations.
I'll second. Look at that, from the audience. It's been moved, and it's not the audience for anyone listening. It's Councilor Hartmeyer-Prigg online making the second. With that, is there any discussion on tonight's motion? See none. Roll the recorder, call the roll.
Councilor Dugger?
Yes.
Councilor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Councilor Hassan?
Yes.
Councilor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councilor Teeter?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
All right, last public hearing. This is now the time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance annexing four parcels of land at 1057 Southwest 179th Avenue, 1079 Southwest 179th Avenue, 1082 Southwest 179th Avenue, and 17895 Southwest Lawton Avenue, and portions of Southwest 179th Avenue and Southwest Lawton Avenue. I now call to order the public hearing, and before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover any legal matters.
Thank you, mayor. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matter, city staff will make a presentation. Then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes each. Finally, there will be time for response or rebuttal to the public testimony by staff. Council members may ask questions of staff or applicants or anyone else who testifies. After the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed, and the council will deliberate towards a final decision. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete the yellow comment card at the back of the room and hand that card to the city recorder up at the end of the dais and wait for your name to be called. Each member of the public will have up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. Now I will identify the criteria the council must use to make its decision tonight, and then I'll ask members if they have any disclosures to make. The council's decision on the adoption of the ordinance must be based on the consideration of Beaverton Code Section 9.09. The council may consider any relevant testimony that it receives. Failure to raise an issue during the city's hearing on this ordinance precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the city council to the Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding include those who submit written testimony and those who present orally this evening. Do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Let the record show there are none. Do any council members wish to report any site visits or expedite contacts? Please let the record show that there are none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the ability of any member of the council to participate in this decision? I see none. Please let the record show that there are none. Presiding officer, or the mayor, that concludes the preliminary legal matters. Thank you.
Awesome, and our present staff person is remote, so please.
All right, thank you. Let me get it up. Okay, good evening, Mayor Beatty and city council members. I'm Lauren Russell, an associate planner in the community development department. The proposal for you tonight is the 179th Avenue Annexations Project. Please note that you should have received a staff supplemental memorandum on June 16 with staff report corrections and one additional staff report exhibit. Tonight, we will be asking council to decide on one item. Does council support annexing the four subject properties and abutting portions of Southwest 179th Avenue and Southwest Lawton Avenue into the city? Please note that there is no concurrent comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments with this annexation proposal. The Housing Authority of Washington County is in the process of divesting its portfolio of single detached public housing units, and the City of Beaverton is interested in facilitating the purchase of these properties by qualified first-time homebuyers in partnership with the Portland Housing Center and Proud Grounds. Annexation of these four properties is necessary for Beaverton to do so. Per ORS 222-040, annexations cannot become effective in the 90 days prior to an election. We hope that processing the annexation without the map amendments, which otherwise would first require us to go to the Planning Commission, will mean the annexation will become effective by early August rather than having to wait until early November. Per Development Code Section 1041, any area annexed to the city shall retain the zoning classification of its former jurisdiction until changed by the city. Therefore, the annexed area will still be Zoned Washington County R6 and will be designated as Washington County interim on the city's land use and zoning maps upon annexation. The subject annexation area, composed of four properties and the abutting right-of-way, is located south of West Baseline Road, west of Southwest 170th Avenue, north of Southwest J Street, and east of Southwest 185th Avenue. The combined area of the four properties is .42 acre in size, and the area of the right-of-way is .8 acre, for a total annexation area of 1.22 acre. Each property is currently developed with a single detached dwelling. The property owner, the Housing Authority of Washington County, submitted a consent letter to annex into the city on April 23, 2025, and the required signatures of the electors residing at the properties were obtained by the city staff on June 13, 2025. The city is the applicant for the proposal tonight. If council approves the annexation, the subject annexation area will be incorporated into the City of Beaverton. If approved, the four properties will also be withdrawn from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, and the Tuolton Valley Water District. The properties will be added to the Five Oaks Triple Creek Neighborhood Association Committee upon annexation. The applicable approval criteria for the proposed annexation are in Beaverton City Code Section 9.09. As detailed in the staff report that is attached to the ordinance tonight as Exhibit C, the annexation complies with all applicable local, regional, and state approval criteria. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the 179th Avenue Annexations Project. This concludes staff's presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of staff? Councilor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Lauren. I just had a clarifying question. Since we typically do the corresponding map amendments at the same time, will we have a follow-up public hearing or action that we would have to take?
So if we decide to assign zones in the future, there would be, there would be a hearing with Planning Commission. They would forward a recommendation to city council. So it would come through again. There's no requirement that we have to assign any zone to it. Development could take place while it still has that R6 county designation. We would just use a combination of, like, the county land use, allowed land uses, plus our, most of our zoning could apply, but a little bit of theirs.
Okay, thank you. And so from the, also, I wanted to follow up on just the question about, you know, annexations don't become effective within a certain amount of time of an election. And so by not doing the map amendments, we think that we're able to expedite the process for them? Is that what I heard?
That's the hope. We would, we would have needed probably an extra month at least to get to Planning Commission first, and with the council calendar during the summer, it would be really difficult to make it work.
Got it, okay. Yeah, thank you very much. I think it's really important for folks to have the ability to vote in the election of where they're being annexed into, right? And so this preserves, you know, if there was an election on the calendar and they, you know, this, so I appreciate looking out for the voter in this way, so thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this topic? Okay, I will close the public hearing. What's the desire of the council?
Mayor, I move to adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 25108, an ordinance annexing four parcels of land at 1057 Southwest 179th Avenue, 1079 Southwest 179th Avenue, 1082 Southwest 179th Avenue, and 17895 Southwest Lawton Avenue, and portions of Southwest 179th Avenue and Southwest Lawton Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Hussin and seconded by Councilor Dugger. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Thank you. I think something really kind of special in the presentation tonight, right, was talking about the way that just like the housing, that this is a housing opportunity and working with the county, working with our partner, that this housing can come into the city and just the potential future of us to help first-time homeowners. You know, we have a solid partnership with Proud Grounds, something that we've continued to invest in as a city. And so I think that that, most of our annexations feel kind of mundane, they're kind of routine, but that to me was something that just really stood out, so I'm looking forward to supporting this motion tonight.
Awesome, thank you for that. All right, recorder, your part.
Councilor Dugger?
Yes.
Councilor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Councilor Hassan?
Yes.
Councilor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councilor Tivdon? Oops, sorry, absent. Councilor Teeter?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, one absent.
Thank you. All right, we are on to council new business. Councilor Kimmy, we've been waiting with wild abandon to hear all about your water-saving idea.
Thank you for giving opportunity. You know, I was kind of torn. You know, I wanted to save water, obviously, and leaning toward tier rate until last moment. So what got me thinking is I spent a lot of money watering, irrigating my front lawn, which is required by the HOA to keep it green. If not, then you get a letter and a fine. But, but just to keep it green adds hundreds of dollars to my water bill every month. So we have opportunity to build another 5,000 units to Cooper Mountain in the future, where maybe we, as a council, as a city, we can change ordinance or incentivize conservation through, what we could do is that we can maybe have developers plant drought tolerant plants rather than grass in the front yard and requiring them to water to make it green, or somehow find a medium where we can, maybe we can require a certain percentage should be grass, so we don't have to force people to water the grass and keep it green. So that was my idea, and I'd like to entertain and have staff take a look at it for the future developments, maybe we can incentivize that. That's a lot of water conservation through that.
It's challenging with HOAs, so I think the attorney's going to have to get back. We can't supersede HOA rules and how they do things. It's a state law. I would be, do you mean incentivize, like, we give people money? Or are you talking like you want us to make a rule, which is not an incentivization, it is a requirement?
It's a requirement. Make a requirement so that future developments do not put grass in the front yard, but have drought tolerant plants, Oregon plants, or rock garden, whatever that is, so that we don't, so we don't have to consume water.
I don't know if we could require that. I'll have the city attorney get back to you, but it is not, and we won't be incentivizing. You want us to require, yes.
Okay, require.
Just why, I'm just making sure I understand. Councilor Hussin?
I mean, I'm supportive of what Councilor Kimmy's suggesting. I think I'm trying to understand the process and procedure to do that correctly. I just want to take a moment, I will read a little bit. Were you next?
Nope, nope, go ahead.
Okay. I know that we're trying to get out of here. I just, I want to take a moment and acknowledge the strength and resilience of the folks in our community with things that are going on in the Middle East, but along with many things that are going on here in our country and across the state. In the face of many of these realities, it's important that we're standing together in support of our neighbors, friends, family members who are hurting and impacted by things, whether they're hundreds of miles away or thousands of miles away. Particularly right now, our community is enriched by the presence of so many from the region, such as Iranian-Americans, like State Representative Farah Chichi, who brings her unique perspective and experience to our state legislature. We're very grateful for her vibrant cultural heritage that Iranian-Americans bring to our city. And fun fact, I was trying to do the math. We have several elected Iranian-Americans across the state. I just don't know them all quite yet. Representative Chichi, like many of our own constituents, does have family in Iran, and often we forget the impact of global events locally. So I just wanted to remind us that many of us have family members across the world, across the city, across the state, that are impacted by these events. I'm sure many of you hear from folks asking us to put out statements or comments or proclamations, and I'm often torn about doing those kinds of things. I'm sure you are too. And so I just wanted to take this moment to say, like, I feel deep sadness over not just what's happening within, you know, our state and country, but across the globe, and honor folks that are impacted by it, because I know they're impacted by it every day, so, thank you.
Sorry, I dropped out of order. Councilor Dugger?
That is okay. I just want to give a shout out to city leadership, to this council, to the mayor, and to city staff, especially in public works, for the pride flags going up today. Every year, I get a number of comments, when is it happening? What's going on? And of course, when I found that out today, I walked around, we took a bunch of photos, and just seeing folks really enjoy that, like, and the three to four emails I've already received talking about that, I just think there's a lot of, to Councilor Hussin's point, there's a lot of negativity in the world right now, a lot of sadness, a lot of immense pain and suffering, and just to see a brief moment of happiness for a good number of our community. Just want to give a shout out to the city staff that made that happen, particularly in leadership public works, all the groups. So just, it really means a lot. Thank you.
And I, you know, raising a flag is, this is our fifth year of doing it, and it's our third year of putting the pride flags downtown. And, you know, the mayor of McMinnville put out a statement earlier this month that she was opposed to doing that or doing a resolution. And as a matter of fact, I was talking to the mayor of the city that you used to manage, and the county around you is trying to put up a, around them are trying to put up a proclamation to not allow any flags besides the US flag and the POW flag to be flown. And so I'm proud to be the mayor of a city that continues to do that because I think visual representation matters. We also fly the Juneteenth flag, which I think is pretty important for us as well. We're running out of flagpoles, so we might have to put up another one to get all of these in. And it does cause a little bit of email chatter when we put up and down the flags. So the reason the pride flags are going up now is because we wanted to wait till after Flag Day, so we're not removing the US flag before Flag Day and putting those up. So that's the reason it's kind of delayed a little bit, and it's the same with the Juneteenth flag. We swap them out for that. Juneteenth flag, we swap them out for that occasion, so. Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Thank you, mayor. I have two, two comments tonight. One is just a statement, and it's, I, I attended a rally in downtown Beaverton on Saturday, and I just wanted to give a shout out to our whole community. I needed a boost of hope and a boost of, I don't know, energy around our shared values as a democratic nation, and so I just wanted to say thank you to, to everyone that came out. It was just a special moment to, to stand up for our democracy and the, and our constitution. On a completely different note, and the, much closer to, you know, Beaverton and my role as a city counselor, and tonight, we, you know, we finished, we kind of finished the fiscal '24, '25 budget with our final supplemental budget, and, you know, for the, every year that I've been on council, and we've been, we've been dealing with our, our structural deficit in our budget, and years ago, Mayor, Counselor Duggar, and Hussin served on our Fiscal Sustainability Committee, which, you know, we had our little budget, our, our, our general fund work session back in April, and we heard a little bit about just where we're at against all of our fiscal sustainability plans, but I wanted to ask, just what are our next steps? So we've, we've now passed another year's budget, we've closed the, the gaps with some really hard and painful decisions, but there's still items on that fiscal, on that fiscal sustainability plan that I would love for us to, like, what is that next step, what is that next conversation? And one of those things that we did identify years ago is a levy, something none of us are particularly excited about, but it is actually a very critical thing for us to have very intentional and serious conversations about. So I know that our agendas are often quite full, and we're coming up on a bit of a summer break, but I would love to maybe get an update and see what, if there's a future work session planned around that levy, because I think it's a really critical piece of us closing the structural piece of this, right? And I know that levies are temporary, and that the voters would have to continue to support them for us to, to be able to use that as a mechanism, but I do think it's an important part in the fiscal health of our city.
Well, it's great timing, the city manager and I were discussing that earlier this week, and so I don't know if she's prepared with a date, I think we might have to come back with that information, but we, we had discussed the planning of it.
We have a work session scheduled, I believe, September 9th, to discuss the fiscal sustainability plan, where we're at, and potential next steps, and what those might look like. We also have some data gathering to do this summer prior to that conversation.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, meeting adjourned.